Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock. We're gonna wait another minute or two for folks to log in on this stormy evening, so please stand by and we will get started in just a couple of minutes. All right, good evening, folks. It looks like we have all of our council members here and our city staff, so I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Thank you very much for joining us here on January 26th for our city council meeting. We did postpone our regular meeting from earlier in the month, so this is technically our first meeting of the month. So the meeting is now called to order, and I have to switch back and forth to my agenda. At this point, I ask everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this point, stand and find the flag. All right. Thank you very much again. So let me check my agenda here. I'm working on one screen. So we did have a closed session, meeting earlier this evening, and at this point, there were no reportable actions from the closed session. So moving on to the approval of the agenda. So we have our agenda set forth this evening. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review the agenda and the packet that goes with it. We do have a request to move item number four, Discussion Update on Urgency Ordinance, and swap that with item number three. Let's see. I just want to make sure that everybody mutes themselves. I just muted everybody, so you are able to unmute yourself, but it does help for the meeting if you keep muted. So again, there has been a request to switch items three and four and move the Discussion Update on Urgency Ordinance, an item number four, into the number three position. So that request has been made. Do we have any other substantive changes that we need to make regarding the agenda? Any councilors wish to make a change to the agenda?
When we get to the consent agenda, I have changes, but not the irregular agenda, no.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda? I think that was a motion to approve the agenda. Is that correct, Dave? And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That is our agenda. And then, like Mr. Davey said, when we get to the consent agenda, we can discuss pulling one of those activities, or one of those agenda items, rather. So we have one, two, three, four, five minutes, the minutes, sorry, from five meetings to approve. So our first is the November 10th, 2020, the approval, or sorry, the minutes from that meeting. Do we have any substantive changes to the November 10th minutes? None from the council? Any public, excuse me, any public comment on the November 10th meeting agenda minutes? All right, seeing none. Do we have, and then we're gonna go through this all at once. So the next meeting agenda minutes for consideration is the second meeting of November, November 24th. Any substantive changes from the council for the November 24th agenda, sorry, meeting minutes? Tom, are you, no, okay. Any comment from the public regarding November 24th? All right, and let me check the chat. Okay. Back to the December 8th. Any substantive changes to the December 8th meeting minutes? Seeing none. Any public comment regarding the December 8th minutes? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Sorry, the December 10th. Any substantive changes to the minutes for the December 10th city council meeting? Any public comment regarding the December 10th meeting? All righty. And finally, then, the December 15th. Any substantive changes to the December 15th minutes? And from the public, any comments regarding any of the minutes, any of the meetings mentioned so far? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I approve to accept all the minutes, all five.
Okay. And a second from Mr. Grover. All those in favor? Aye.
Daveys, aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, so thank you very much for that. Let's see, moving on then to council reports and committee assignments. Start with Mr. Columbus. Any reports from your committee work, board of directors, et cetera?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. So I submitted this in writing. I just want to go over the highlights. The Indian Gaming Benefits Committee is really inactive due to a lack of state funds, so that's not changed. The California Coastal National Monument Gateway Committee, it's a long name. What I learned from this is that the California Coastal National Monument is something that is the coast of California. It's 840 miles long. It was done by a presidential proclamation back in January 2000. So this committee really has helped to identify the best places that you would enjoy this state monument, to bring in the community to participate and support this gateway, to promote coordination and cooperation amongst stakeholders, including the Bureau of Land Management, and to focus efforts locally. So we had a most recent committee meeting on January 21st. The two things I want to report out that will occur next month in February is on Saturday, February 13th, will be a walking beach tour, which will be by RSVP only with masks and social distancing. I included the information if you have any interest in signing up. In addition, on February 18th, there'll be a webinar on seabird community science. So if you're interested in seabirds here, it might be an opportunity to learn about that. The next meeting for this committee is scheduled in March. The next was the Humboldt County Visitors Bureau. I've spoken with Julie Bembo, the executive director, and my work over the past two months is putting a number of stakeholders that promote and organize events in Trinidad in contact with the Visitors Bureau to make sure that the website, visitredwoods.com, is up to date, either in scheduling or just information about this. So that's all been accomplished. Final note is about the Trinidad Water Committee. I'm a member of that along with Jack West and Eli Naffa. What I'd like to report on is the flow of Liffenholz Creek. We rely on a company called Pacific Watershed Associates to provide a measurement, because the creek really is our water supply for the city of Trinidad, and it's above one cubic feet per second of flow. But the unfortunate part is that the company has not been able to provide automatic measurements by telemetry to our water department. So I've asked our city manager, now this is the second request, to communicate with this company to make sure that they're able to deliver on the three-year contract that was signed last year. Finally, it would be important for residents to understand that as grateful as we all are for rainfall, especially for a night like tonight, I would recommend that they visit a website called drought.gov. I put a couple of things on here. It really indicates that Humboldt County is still in a drought situation, both moderate as well as severe. And this is the 36th driest December in 127 years of measurements, and the sixth driest year to date in 127 years of measurements. Humboldt County is coming over 25 inches of rainfall compared to the normal levels. So it's important to understand that it's raining, it's great, Liffenholz Creek is flowing, but in general, if you look at the trends and where we are at the 50,000 foot level, so to speak, Humboldt County is still in a drought situation. So I think that's just important to note. And thank you. If any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Columbus. Any questions for Richard? All right, Mr. Grover, are you able to provide us a report?
Yes, can everybody hear me already?
You're broken up.
I got the video, obviously, helps. PA, I'm going this Thursday. I did a brief written report here. I was able to attend a hazards material response authority meeting. It's a quarterly meeting. We just had a one agenda. Now, yeah, because there were new members, different after the election last November, I took the general chair position. I'm gonna get more involved with that. I want to reiterate that if you look at that, I added links to the brief report that I did, in case you want to see what the agenda is, in case you want to get more involved with all these. The hazards materials actually respond team, we get a report from a man from the Eureka Fire Department, and anything that we have to do with our fire system here, we can integrate him and his training that with people locally, and it's something that we have to start looking into, because there's not a lot of, a lot of action at our fire station that I know, and we should have a response team and things set up with that. So that's about it. On a different note, I did attend a Green Party Assembly for Eagles Socialism. If anybody wants to talk to me more about that, that's just to do with fair housing and just equity all along, you know, just overall. And that's with Humboldt Cooperation, Cooperation Humboldt website, you can reach. Cooperation Humboldt. So I hope I wasn't too broken up, and that's about all.
Yeah, that was very broken up for me. I don't know if other councilors or other viewers had a difficult time, but I wonder, Dave, if you might consider calling in and see if that's a better connection, I'm not sure, but that was really difficult for me to follow. So I'm hearing, I'm seeing a couple other heads nodding, so maybe give us a call, David, and see if that works for you. Let's move on to Mr. West.
This is. All right. I just have a couple of things from HCOG, which we just met Thursday, so I didn't get anything in writing yet. One of the things is there's the REAP organization is part of the housing needs for Humboldt County. It's the regional early action planning that HCOG is putting together, and of course, every city gets a certain amount of money, and the overall pot is $785,000. What they're doing is they're going to do some combining, especially of the smaller cities, and try to work programs out that'll affect every city, all the small cities, and see if they can work together using a larger pot and come up with ideas for housing needs. So that should be something that we'll hear more about as this year goes on. The only other thing was the 101 corridor is actually, they actually are going to be doing quite a bit of work on it over the next, starting next month. And so in February, you should actually start seeing a lot happening. It's still a ways off, but they have got pretty much most of the initial money and information they need to get started. Last Chance Grade, however, is still a long way off. They still have a lot of work to do, except it's still gonna be a couple of years before they really even have any kind of route that they can use. Anyway, that's all I have for HCOG. Oh, quickly, to back up what Richard is saying, Richard was telling me about the Water Committee. I just want to compliment him on the work we've met, and he's really got a lot of great ideas in terms of looking at our drought issues. All this coming along nicely. Definitely want to thank Richard for the work he's doing.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Daveys?
Yes, the Trails Committee hasn't met, but we were planning to give a yearly update with recommendations to the council at this meeting, and it did not make it on the agenda. I wasn't asked anything about it. I don't really know why, so I'm just kind of wondering why that didn't make it on the agenda here, because maybe something wasn't submitted on time, but we were ready to give a presentation tonight. So hopefully, we can get that on the agenda for the next meeting. We can write that down, and we can do the yearly recommendation. It'll be a slideshow with a couple members presenting, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I was able to attend the Redwood Region Economic Development Meeting last night, and it's just, it's encouraging that that organization has an A rating and was told to apply for $3 million basically grant to give out as part of their loan portfolio, excuse me. And in the last couple of months, they've given out $1.3 million in loans to companies ranging from producing skateboard wheels to reopening service industry-type businesses to logging operations. And so even in the middle of COVID, there's quite a bit of economic stimulus coming through the Redwood Region Economic Development. So a very, very robust organization. So that's all we have for committee assignments at this point and council reports. I'm gonna turn it over at this point to our city manager, Eli Naffa, for his staff report.
So as far as my staff report, I will be presenting that at the next meeting in two weeks, February 9. But we do have Lieutenant Kevin Miller from our Sheriff's Department, and I'll turn it over to him to make some comments regarding law enforcement.
Excellent. Thank you, Eli. Good evening, everybody. I thought this would be a perfect meeting to kind of report out on the year-end stats for the greater Trinidad area, which, as we fore-encompasses also, West Haven area is kind of generally a three to four mile circle around the city itself. So in the last year, there were a total of 2,125 calls for service in that area. It resulted in 206 reports being taken. 88 of those were felonies. 98 of them were misdemeanors and resulted in 33 arrests. Just to give you kind of a comparison, I'll compare McKinleyville, which had a total call volume of 12,148 calls for service. So just kind of give you a comparison of what you're looking at there. And again, those numbers don't reflect Trinidad itself. I should refine those enough to make it specific to Trinidad. So that also includes, you know, Senior Drive, portions of Apache Point Drive, West Haven, and areas like that. So don't think, like, that there were 2,125 calls for service within the city limits. Only a fraction of that number was actually in the city, I would imagine. I also have, I think I was asked for this before, I have a comparison of our December stats from last year in comparison to our December stats in 2019. 2019, and this encompasses the same area that I just discussed. Calls for service were 109 in 2019, and they went up 52% to 228 in 2020. Reports went from eight in 2019 to 20 in 2020, and arrests were about the same at six. Polying investigations went up to 12 in 2020 from five in 2019. And investigations in December of 2020 were 11 compared to nine, so not much of a change there. The remainder of the stats pretty much remain the same until we get down to kind of the end of the report here, where we discuss miscellaneous calls for service. And for those of you that haven't heard me talk before, miscellaneous calls for service are calls for service that don't normally fit into other categories such as domestic violence, petty theft, theft, and along that line. So they could be pretty much anything. In December of 2019, there were a total of 66, and December of 2020, we had a total of 162, and that was a 59% increase from 2019. That is my report.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Any questions for Lieutenant Miller? Richard?
Yeah, I appreciate the detail and the work in comparing last year to this year. Is there some way that you could submit that to us in writing, so at least we could make it a part of the minutes? Is that possible?
Certainly. Yes, yeah, I can get that to Eli.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, I look at this report every month, and I have no idea how compared to a year ago, and this particular presentation was very helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Any other comments or questions from either the council or the general public, Lieutenant Miller? I heard someone start speaking. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
On, there's, on the November report, 2020, there's one case that's missing. I brought it to Officer Jaeger's attention. I was wondering if it could be included, just to reflect coverage data. And I have the report, if you want to. It's a, it's a break-in on Van Wijk on November 6th.
Ms. Thompson, you're probably broken on my end. I can't really hear you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're broken up as well, Anita. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry.
I could hear her, if I could just relay her concern. She says there's a case missing about a break-in that she would like to have incorporated into the record from November of 2020, and she has the case number, and Eli is aware. She has notified Deputy Jaeger before he left as well.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. So, Ms. Thompson, just go ahead and call the Sheriff's Office McKinleyville Station tomorrow and ask to speak with me, and we can see what happened with that and get it added if it needs to be, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Lieutenant Miller?
I have a comment. This is Dorothy.
Go ahead, Dorothy.
I'm looking back at the minutes from after the rash of burglaries or car break-ins that we had in November, and one of the items I looked at, or one of the statements, was that we have a new contract sometime in January. This is January. So I'd like to be real clear from my personal knowledge and for everyone else to know also, what exactly, what days exactly do we have someone here? Has that changed? Have we added? Because I know things have changed in January. Hopefully, it was, contract negotiations will begin sometime in January. That's what Eli said. So I want to know what days I have, I have to know what dates we have coverage from what hour to what hour, both. I think there are two deputies, one half-time and one, and are we at any point discussing nighttime coverage yet? That's what I need to know.
Yes, so right now, I mean, the topic of nighttime coverage is something that we can always discuss. I think it just comes down, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Yes, so we have discussed nighttime coverage in the past. I think it's, you know, you have a finite piece of, you know, chess pieces that you can move around, which is one and a half deputies. It's not a whole lot of resources. My experience in moving personnel around would generally have done it seasonally, you know, winter versus summer. The thing is, is that the bad guys, they figure out when the deputies are working, and all they do is simply adjust their hours. So the question is, is do we have, you know, deputies working during the normal business hours when everyone's up and about, so that they're available to meet with the public and talk with folks? Generally, that's been the consensus, that that's probably the best time with only one and a half deputies. You do have coverage six days a week now, which is excellent. That's quite an increase from what you had just a few months ago. With that said, so generally, they're eight o'clock in the morning until six o'clock at night.
And so when you say eight o'clock in the morning, you mean eight o'clock they check in in Eureka, and they're here by nine or 8:45?
No, your deputies, your deputies report directly to the city. All of our briefings and everything are done remotely.
Oh, that's great. So we actually have someone here at 8:00, that is incredible. Thank you.
Yes, so.
I know that, I know that we're seasonal, and I, and I know the bad guys work around their own schedules, but I'm not the resident of this town, aware of some problems happening, and not so much the summertime things, but there's other things in town, and we need, we need to know that someone's available. If I have to call, and Joe was very good, I don't think that, I made a report also and have a case number, and I don't think mine is on there, so I'll call Margaret tomorrow and see if I can make sure mine is on there, because I want a record of the issues that I've had, and who, so I will contact her tomorrow, maybe get ahold of Brian again also. I have two more incidents that I want to have on the record as being reported in the last week.
Yes.
So I'm glad to know that he's here. Known Brian a long time. It's nice to have someone familiar for me in town, and he was very helpful the first time I had an issue and understood what I was talking about. So, oh, I appreciate this. I still, I still want to encourage the council to figure out something for nighttime coverage, maybe some, maybe seasonal, maybe summertime, maybe early fall. That's when we have our issues. So thanks for the consideration.
Since, let me just add, since this is the second question in regards to having a case number or making a report and not seeing it reported out on other reports that I provide here, understand that I'm not reporting every single thing, because I would take away a whole lot of time reporting every single thing out. And also, some of these cases, first of all, if you have a case number, it's been documented. It's in our system. It's memorialized. It'll be there forever. And a lot of times, a lot of times, these get, you know, for example, you might report a burglary, but once the case is looked at and the elements of the crime are put together, it's actually a petty theft, so it may get categorized as a petty theft versus a grand theft or a burglary. I mean, minute details, but either way, these things are, if you have a case number, it's memorialized, it exists.
I appreciate knowing that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Lieutenant Miller? Thank you very much, Lieutenant, for joining us this evening and for the rich discussion with our residents. So we will move on now to items from the floor. Let me just read this so that we're consistent. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not individual council members or staff. Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. At this point, do we have any items from the floor? And I can only see a third of you at a time on the screen, so feel free to unmute yourself and that brings you to the front of the queue, as it were.
I have a point.
Dorothy does.
Okay, go ahead, Dorothy.
Oh, I thought you were, um, give me a second here. I started to write something down. I lost my train of thought. Give me a second. Come back to me.
Okay, David, you had a hand up?
Yeah, I just had a point on my phone. I wasn't able to hear when I called in, but I don't know if I'm in a different room now, where I use them. Can you hear me okay now? Was it still broken up?
No.
Very broken up.
Very broken up.
Any, any items from the floor at this point? Items not found in the agenda?
I remember mine.
Did you, okay, go ahead, Ms. Cox.
So Mary and I, in walking around town, were very aware of motorhomes and things parked in places that shouldn't be. The motorhome or the RV that's parked up on Frontage Road Park and Ride has been there close to four months. It's been ticketed differently twice. And I'd just like to bring everyone's attention that if there's anybody that's got any way to get rid of that thing, it needs to go. It's been, it's gonna, it's nobody living in that. It's a lot, the most of the trash that we have, that we find in that area is behind it, because it's kind of a hidden area. Some of the nastiest trash we find is up that way. But there's no one in that motorhome, and it has two tickets tonight. Just don't know how long it's supposed to take. So any help Mary and I could get with that, we'd like to see it gone. We said we're gonna throw a party when it finally goes.
And I believe that we spoke of this during the last meeting, Dorothy, where Lieutenant Miller was aware, or sorry, yeah, someone was aware of the tickets and I'm not sure what the, the protocol is on towing a vehicle with two yellow tags on it. Lieutenant Miller, can you weigh in on that? We may have lost, oh, there he is.
I'm here. I'm here. So I'm not directly familiar with the car at the Frontage Park and Ride, but I do know that we can share that jurisdiction somewhat with the CHP. So I don't know if necessarily that was ticketed by our vehicle abatement folks or CHPs, but I know it's something that we can look into. The problem that we generally run into with abandoned RVs is that we have a really tough time finding a tow company that will come out and tow it. We really have to kind of pull and call some favors and, and do a lot of luxury work, because the tow companies don't like to take something that they're not going to get a return on, per se. With that said, again, that doesn't mean that we can't get it out of there or CHP can't get out of there. I'll have to look and see if it's ours or if it's Highway Patrol's, though.
Thank you for looking into that.
For clarification, it's not a car. I'm talking about, it's a very large RV parked in, parked right in front of the sign that says no parking here.
Right.
So thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Large RVs historically, not just in Trinidad, are a really hard, hard problem to deal with, because we have to find a tow company that wants to work with us. But we have avenues.
Other items from the floor at this point?
Yeah, do we just speak or?
Yes, go ahead. Then identify yourself, please.
Ross Ward.
Okay.
I want to know if the city has any plans of implementing regulations on short-term rentals. As someone that would like to eventually live there, having grown up there, and be a homeowner, I kind of see myself getting priced out of all the homes in Trinidad, and they're all short-term rentals, the majority of them. So I want to know if the city council has any ideas on how to, you know, eventually make it into a livable home for small families rather than a vacation area.
I suggest you get to the City of Trinidad's website, and our ordinances are archived there. And there is a short-term rental ordinance that talks about exactly what you're talking about, about how many vacation rentals in town, what are the rules, and so on and so forth. So I definitely recommend you check that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other items from the floor? All right, hearing and seeing none. I'm going to check my agenda here. At this point, we have the consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is requested by any council member, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A single opportunity for public comment on the consent agenda is available. So I believe, Mr. Davies, you wanted one of these items removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to remove actually two, five and six from the consent agenda.
Okay, we will put those after item four, because we do have some folks here with time certain. So we'll move those to after item four, if that's okay.
Yeah, better there than nowhere, I guess. So that's fine.
Okay.
This is Trevor. I don't know if you want me to stick around for the SHN agreement, but I wasn't planning on, I think the waterline item's going to be pretty long, and I wasn't planning on.
I had a couple of questions about that agreement, and I would actually prefer that that would be happening right now with Trevor here.
Yeah, no, that one, if Trevor, that, that definitely requires Trevor. So we can move that one to number one.
Thank you.
Does that work for folks?
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Any, any other counselors wish to speak on the consent agenda? Any public comment on the consent agenda? I see that, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I do want to comment regarding agenda item number four. In my staff report, I did write down under action, I said, the city approval of the letter of permission and to change the approval language to read. So, and then I give the, the language. So the language in the letter that was submitted, the one word that said tribe twice should have been tribes offered to grant access to the city instead of tribes offered to grant access to the tribe. So I don't know if we need to pull that so that we could make that modification to the agreement, or if it's sufficient with the staff report attached. And I know our attorney's online, maybe he could weigh in as to if that would be necessary to pull or not.
Russ, what's your thought on that?
Yeah, the council certainly directs staff to make modifications to the agreement prior to approval, should the council.
Okay. Any other public comment regarding the consent agenda? And then I do want to make some space after this for Steve Madrone for an item from the floor. He had difficulties getting our attention.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Bryce Kenny. I, I wanted to make a few comments on, I don't know what number it is, but it's the GHD contract item on the consent agenda, which is being pulled off.
That's going to be a discussion item, Bryce. And so is that, go ahead?
I can wait till later to talk about that.
I think that's appropriate, just because we've turned it into a discussion item. So we'll, we'll seek your input at that point.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All righty. So what I'm hearing now is that our consent agenda is consisting of items one, two, and three, and four. And items five and six have been pulled. In item four, we want to make sure the language does not reflect from tribe to tribe, but from tribe to city, as mentioned by our city manager. So if that is accurate, can we have a, sorry, in a motion for, a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Although we accept the consent agenda, number one through four, with changes to number four that are appropriate.
All right, that's our.
Second by Davies.
And second by Davies. Thank you. All those in favor, put your hand up or say aye.
Aye. Davies, aye.
Okay. Motion passes, so our consent agenda passes with the exclusion of two of the items moved to the action section. So at this point, I'm going to bring it back to public, sorry, items from the floor and give Mr. Madrone a chance to provide his item from the floor. Go ahead, Steve. I don't hear you. Yeah, I just, I just requested to unmute you, Steve. There you go.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Yeah, the, the signal is just so bad with this Cisco WebEx, and I just don't know what it is. But every meeting of yours, I try to participate in, it's difficult. Your signal you're sending out from wherever your server is or whatever is unstable. And you see that at every meeting where people are struggling to hear each other, they're struggling to make comment. Tom Davies had to step in and interpret for the other, I mean, so I, I have never experienced this with Zoom. I do all of my work from my home up in Fox Farm Road in the forest. And I can tell you that Zoom is extremely stable. And I would highly recommend that the city look into a Zoom account, because I think it will actually smooth your meetings out and include and improve your public participation. So I just wanted to give you that feedback. And it's just, it happens every week. And I'm not sure what it is, but Zoom doesn't have this problem here in this area. So just an FYI suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And we can certainly look into that. I've heard similar comments from other folks that use Zoom and WebEx and go to meetings, that Zoom is the most stable. So we can certainly look into that. All right, at this point, let me check my agenda. We are moving on to our first item, which is moved from the consent, which is item number five from the consent, authorize SHN agreement for California Housing and Community Development LEAP grant. Because this was consent, I don't know that Trevor is ready for an intro, but how about this? Let's start with Tom's question, since he asked to bring this into discussion. And let's go from there.
Yeah, thank you. I guess my lights are flashing here, so I'm going to try to just say this, the most important one. I noticed on the signature page of the contract for this grant, under compensation, it says total compensation to SHN for this project is not to exceed dollar sign XXX. And so I'm concerned that there's not a number for what we would be, you know, paying for this.
That should read the fifty-four, five hundred that's in the bottom of the table there below it.
Yeah, I, I gathered that. It would probably be helpful if it were in both places.
Yes.
And then just a couple of questions.
Uh-oh. So my lights are out.
We're back now. Jack, how do you still have power?
Steve, by the way, you're still loud and clear.
Yeah, I know. And I, I want to say, oh, shit, again, because I'm in the dark. Oh, now I'm in the light.
All right.
Why didn't Jack go out? I literally can hear Jack outside of my window.
Lights me over here.
Power backup.
All right, give it a chance.
Okay, he's got, you've got batteries, don't you, Jack?
I have a battery on my router, yep.
We have a test, yeah, we have a test outside, so we don't go down.
Oh, my gosh. All right, I'm going to get an extension cord. I'll be right back. All right. Can we assume that, I see a lot of little yellow triangles in people's Zoom or whatever, WebEx grid. My guess is we need, no, it's actually only a few.
Well, it's, it's, we got, we've got David and Eli, it looks like, that need to come back on.
All right, let's see. Gabe just texted backup power. So Gabe is, the backup power in City Hall just came on, and he's waiting to come back on. And it looks like Dave and Eli are out currently. Dave is back now. Looking somewhat better. Where did Dave go? Dave's gone altogether now. Well, we have a quorum. We have four out of five. So let us continue at this point. And if we need to table this until our city manager gets back in, we can do that. Russ, were you able to get back in? Yes, I see Russ is in the, in the meeting. Okay.
Yes, addressing the mayor, of course. We never lost power. Your concern, of course, is that if your internet connection is so disrupted, we're not effectively conducting a public meeting with adequate participation by the public. So I know it's very perplexing for the council and, and those members of the public present, but you have a number of options. If you're confident that you have full participation, you can proceed. You also have the option, of course, to call an emergency continuance of this meeting to attend for hours if you should select, or another time period if you have concerns about the availability of the public to participate. So that'd be my primary concern.
Well, I'm looking to, for the council. So we had fifty-two participants at the power outage, and now we have thirty-eight. And so I am a little concerned. Well, they're going to start trickling back in, I imagine. How about this? Let's, let's finish this agenda item, because it's, I, I believe that Tom and Trevor are making some headway on this. And then we'll reassess at our next agenda item. How about that? And see if that number gets closer to fifty-two.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple clarifying questions after the dollar figure. So how does, how do we target these income allocations for housing in Trinidad?
That's a good question. So we, we did do that as part of the housing element update early last year. So unfortunately, we thought Trinidad got a little bit short end of the stick, because we, the, the group that does that was coming up with their numbers right when Dan Berman left. And so the, the city didn't have someone participating in, in that. And so, you know, they, for example, in reading And so, you know, they, for example, in reading the report, you know, when talking about limitations, they didn't mention any kind of limitations like septic and water and some of the other things that, that limit development and density in the city. So, so those numbers are a little high, but in our housing element that was just adopted last year, the city did show that we do have the land available for those numbers. So the city doesn't actually have to, you know, have that development occur. The city just needs to show that the, the land is available because the market's going to dictate what actually gets developed. So, and, and the Department of Housing and Community Development did certify the city's housing element. So we are, we are good on, on those Rena numbers that are in that table.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. It seems odd that we can just say we have it and then no, it's probably never going to happen. But I guess that's part of the government game. I don't know. So how can we accelerate housing production as it says here?
Yeah, so the Leap Grant is is also going to complement the SB two grant that, that we just got started on. I think maybe you approved that contract in November last year. That included a variety of projects, so we're going to take another look at the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. That's part of the SB two grant. But that's a big piece of it is, is getting a second unit ordinance certified through the council commission. So I think we have, we're going to be working on a, completing a parking study this year, and then with that, I think we'll have all the information that the postal commission has asked for to process our second unit ordinance. And we have to do some updates to that ordinance to get it in compliance with new state law. So that's one of the projects. Other things include for the specifically, looking at reasonable accommodation. So the city doesn't have an exception process for people with disabilities that might need, need things that don't quite meet the zoning ordinance or building code. So we're going to work on that process to make that a little bit easier for people. There's a number of zoning ordinance updates to be in compliance with state law that we're going to do as part of that. We're also going to do some, some water conservation is also part of that. So looking at a a water efficient landscape ordinance. So the state has one, but we're going to look at, at something that's a little bit more usable for Trinidad and also incorporating water use into our, our permit procedures. So the idea is that if we're able to conserve water and reduce water use overall, then that sort of reduces that limitation on housing. So those, I think those are the primary tasks under the, under this Leap Grant.
Yeah, that, what you just said kind of touched on my last comment that as I was looking through, it looked like it's about housing. And, and I looked at the figure being budgeted in water conservation far and above the category. I wonder how that worked into a housing grant application.
So does that answer your question?
I think so. It just seems, yeah, I don't, I guess it does. Thank you.
So what I'm hearing is that we need to make sure that the, that the information has the number, the, the salary or the, the wages, I think it was called. Instead of just being in the table, it also needs to be in the text. Is that right, Tom?
That's what I would prefer to see, yeah, in both places, the same figure, if it's a legal document.
Yeah. So moving forward, we can make a motion to approve it with that amendment so that we have in the public record that, that that is the, that is the, the substantive change that we want to make to what we're approving. So Tom, do you want to craft that, that motion?
Sure, I, I move we approve the SHN agreement for California Housing and Community Development Leap Grant with the adjustments made under compensation where the figure at the total on the bottom of the table is reflected in the text of the compensation.
Do we have a second?
Second, yes.
All right, Richard, seconds, first and second, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, I need to ask for public comment. Do we have any public comment at this point? Apologize for that. All right, seeing none and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Davies, aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, at this point, we are moving on to item number labeled number one in the discussion action agenda item, the discussion decision regarding revised water shortage contingency plan. So at this point, I would ask that Trevor continue and provide us the update on this contingency plan.
Yeah, thank you. So basically I just incorporated the comments and changes that we discussed at the last meeting that we discussed this at, which was the December eighth meeting. Primarily that discussion revolved around how to deal with exceptions and appeals. And it was pretty clear that the council wanted a, a group of people making a decision on an exception. So change that to the water response team, but minus the city council members. So exceptions will be the water shortage response team minus the council members so that they wouldn't have to issue themselves should a decision be appealed to the city council. There are a couple other minor corrections that I ran across in there. The other change I made for you to think about is I, I didn't have myself, the city planner on the water shortage response team. I'm not advocating to be on it, but I have become involved in, in water system planning for the city. It wasn't something I've, I've been real involved, involved in in the past. But so, and since I've sort of helped develop this plan, it makes sense to have me as part of that team as well.
All right, thank you for that, Trevor. Questions or comments from the council for Trevor?
Yes?
Yeah, go ahead, Richard, sorry.
So this water shortage contingency plan sets up a water shortage response team. I, I got that, I understand it fully, ramifications. Does that mean that once this is adopted, the current water committee basically dissolved? And in its place, we create members for the water shortage response team. Is that the, the, the next step? Is that what's implied with this?
I think that's implied. It wouldn't happen on adoption of this plan though, because the water committee is, is still codified in the city's ordinances and that water rationing ordinance. And so the next step to implement this plan would be to revise that ordinance or, or adopt a, a new ordinance in place of that one that would implement this plan. And I guess, I mean, maybe there's a role for both the existing water committee and the water response team could discuss that as part of the, this plan or, or the future ordinance that we'll be talking about.
That help, Richard?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, other questions, comments for Trevor from the council? Go ahead, Jack.
Just, just briefly, I thought this was a, you did a very nice job of putting together what we asked for. This looks like a pretty, pretty nice, a very nice document. Just congratulations.
Thank you.
And my comment is really that I, I actually support the inclusion of our, our city planner, Trevor. I think with your breadth and depth of, of experience and knowledge, I think adding you to the team makes a lot of sense because of your both internal and external perspectives that you bring. So I would advocate that we follow your recommendation and include city planner in that on the team member. At this point, I'm going to bring it out to the general public. Do we have any comments or questions regarding our drought contingency plan, the updated version of it from our, our public? And again, give me a chance to look through and see if any names or any hands go up. Mr. Kenny?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bryce Kenny, 462 Ocean Avenue. I was involved on this a little bit back at the planning commission level, so it's nice to see that it made it all the way through the process, and I'd like to commend everybody who's doing all the good work on it. Trevor Parker did a wonderful job with this and so I'm, I'm happy to endorse it completely and hope we never need the plan, but it's good to have it there just in case.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from the general public? And again, if you start speaking, then your, your window moves to the front and I can see it. All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Does the council have any motion to move forward with this agenda item?
Yes.
Go ahead, Richard.
I'd like to make a motion that the council accepts the water shortage contingency plan as written.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, Davies.
Mr. Grover, are you able to weigh in on this? I don't see your face in your, in your window. Give me a quick second, folks. Sorry for this. I'm going to text David and see if he is at his computer, at his phone.
In the meantime, just check, as part of that motion, you want staff to continue with developing an ordinance to implement it, I, I would assume.
That was what I was, was seeing in the, in the recommendations as stated. Would, would the council agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, let the, let the record state that we had four ayes and, and one abstention from Mr. Grover. I, I don't know where he went. So, but we'll move forward then at this point, and hopefully he'll rejoin our meeting. Moving on to item number two in the discussion, action item section, discussion decision regarding participation and feasibility analysis to extend Humboldt Bay municipal water service to Trinidad. And so there will be several introductions. I'm going to start with an introduction. We have received many letters and emails rather. And I, so I just want to, there's a lot of interest in this. We've had over a hundred forms of communication sent to us. We do have John Friedenbach with us from Humboldt Bay Water to engage in a discussion with the council. And if I may set the stage for this discussion, our, and this is in direct response to some of the, the letters and comments that we received. Our agenda item this evening is to discuss Trinidad's involvement in a feasibility study to bring water north of Little River into Trinidad West Haven area. At this point, we are not in any, in any position to discuss anything beyond that. Many of the comments that we did receive were not regarding this specific agenda item. I also want to state that I very much recognize that this entering a feasibility study is a potential move in a direction that many of the folks who reached out to us were opposed to. So I'm not blind to the fact that, that your comments were related, but again, our agenda item is limited to whether or not the city should participate in the feasibility study. And so I respectfully ask people to make your comments to the feasibility study. And I'm also going to ask the council, at this point, we have John Friedenbach with us who will be able to provide input on what that feasibility study looks like, what the city might be expected to encumber financially, what the staff time, city staff time might be required to participate in said feasibility study. And at that point, we would have our information regarding the study. So I hope everyone can agree to that. I definitely want to honor the fact that we have a, a lot of input to, to consider tonight, and we also want to make sure that we have, give everybody the respect that they deserve. So at this point, I am going to ask Mr. Friedenbach to give us a brief discussion or, or description rather of what Trinidad city involvement in a feasibility study would look like in terms of a general cost to expect and some parameters that we might consider, as well as staff time from the city. And then finally, I want to say that the, the city manager in our agenda, in the staff report, indicated that there were several options to engage in the feasibility study, to not engage in the feasibility study. And I want to pose a third one, which is for the city to make a decision regarding water use and water independence at this meeting without really getting into the details, but really setting a course for our actions in the near future. So please, Mr. Friedenbach, if you could provide us an introduction and then we'll bring it over to Mr. Nafa, if he has any further discussions from a city manager's perspective. At this point, Mr. Friedenbach, I, I turn the floor over to you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. On my telephone, so I wanted to be sure you could hear me. So our request is pretty simple and straightforward. It was contained in the letter I sent to the city council on December fourth. We've been approached to investigate the feasibility of constructing or, or installing a water transmission line from the north end of McKinleyville service area up to and past West Haven to the Trinidad rancheria. And it makes sense when you're installing infrastructure like this to ask any parties, agencies, municipalities that might be interested in having access to that infrastructure if you'd want to participate in the feasibility analysis. And that's, that's what's before your council tonight. So participation in the feasibility study does not commit the city of Trinidad to participate in, ultimately, if a, a water line is constructed from McKinleyville North, you can, you know, choose not to participate in that in the future date. The city of Trinidad has conducted and commissioned several feasibility studies over the last four or five decades, and no water line came out of any of those feasibility studies. So the folks that are concerned that the mere participation in that feasibility study ultimately, you know, guarantees that a water line is going to go to Trinidad and just, you know, there's no basis in that at all. So just wanted to make that clear. As far as costs and, and time involved by the city of Trinidad staff, as I just mentioned, there have been a number of studies, feasibility studies done in the past. I see the bulk of the time for Trinidad city staff being, you know, compiling and producing those historical studies, providing those to our water district so we can be sure that the consultant that looks at the feasibility has all those prior analysis. Those will, I think, minimize the ultimate cost for the feasibility analysis. So it's in Trinidad's interest to produce all of those studies, anything that would be relevant. So it's in Trinidad's interest to produce all of those studies, anything that would be relevant. And I think you've had some, um, water reliability studies done recently, you know, all of those current, more current studies are obviously more relevant to your current situation. In terms of cost, we have not, um, approached a, a engineering firm yet to give us a price quote for a feasibility study, um, because um, when this letter went out to you, a similar letter went out to the West Haven Community Service District, um, a letter went out to the McKinleyville Community Service District asking the basic same question, um, would those municipalities be interested in participating in, in a feasibility analysis? Um, it's hard to get, in, in fact, um, um, impossible to get a quote from a, a consultant to do a feasibility analysis if you don't know who the players are and the extent of the feasibility. So, once, um, we hear from each entity, then we have a package to give to a consultant. They can, they can give us a price quote. Um, I can tell you that at the first of January, um, I think it was the sixth, actually, we met with McKinleyville Community Service District. They agreed to participate and allow a, potentially allow a water line extension to extend from the northern section of their distribution grid. Um, so that's one player. Um, West Haven Community Service District has communicated to our district that they are not interested in participating in the feasibility study. Um, they have said, however, that, uh, at some point in the future, they might like to um, connect to a line if one is constructed for fire service at no cost. Um, that's not going to happen. Um, or, um, they're apparently having some issues with the water board on their, uh, water system and they wanted to reserve the right to connect at a future time. Um, that's problematic, um, because when you cite a, um, in size of a water line extension, you look at the demand of the ultimate users to size the pipe accordingly. Um, and if West Haven doesn't participate initially or the city of Trinidad does not participate initially, um, that basically prevents you or West Haven from connecting at a future date because the pipe will be sized too small to allow additional capacity. So that's, um, this is a long range decision that, um, your council needs to consider in, um, you know, guaranteeing water supply for your current residents of the city of Trinidad, at least, um, in, in my opinion. That's the, the decision that you're looking at today. Terms of, of cost and, and how to manage the cost, the, the real hard dollar cost, not the staff time. Um, the, your council can, um, you know, direct staff to authorize uh, expenditure of up to, let's say for a discussion, $5,000 in consulting fees. Um, if those fees are expended, then you can direct staff to come back to your council, give an update report, status of where the feasibility is at, at that time and request a, a additional quote from the consultant to, um, determine, you know, what it would cost to complete the feasibility study at that time. And you could decide whether to move forward or not. So there are several, uh, I think, options for you to, to move forward with this in a cautious and prudent manner, um, that serves your interests. So, um, and I think your, your city manager's staff report had a lot of relevant issues. I'm not going to, um, you know, go over those. I thought it was very thorough in what he presented for you to consider. So with that, I'm here and available for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Friedenbach. Uh, any council, uh, questions for Mr. Friedenbach at this point? Go ahead, Richard.
You know, there's, there's been a lot of discussion, uh, Mr. Friedenbach, about capacity and limiting development even beyond Trinidad. And what I'm trying to make sure I understand and, and our residents understand that if, uh, Trinidad were to agree to have a certain diameter pipe deliver water to our water plant and that pipe was based upon the needs of the 350 or so residents of the city, wouldn't, why would there be extra water to support development elsewhere if the system was designed only to support pretty much the city of Trinidad? Is, is there any excess capacity in that?
Um, I don't see any, uh, you know, at the outset, but you, you would have to see if, um, you know, the, the size of the pipe that was ultimately chosen, if you chose to have a pipe extend up to Trinidad, had any excess capacity. Um, you know, maybe a resident, um, take on water conservation and, and don't actually use the demand that was projected, um, when the pipe was sized. That's the only real area where I can see where you could, you know, basically have some excess capacity, um, assuming your original assumptions are correct and accurate. But the city of Trinidad would control, um, you know, development through planning and zoning inside your city limits. The county of Humboldt controls development through planning and zoning outside your city limits. Um, and you would control your own water distribution system. So if you don't extend your distribution grid outside your city limits, I don't see how people that are outside your city limits could have access to your water.
Um, other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Davies.
Yeah, hi, uh, Mr. Friedenbach. I have a couple of questions for you. So, um, assuming this ultimately came to fruition at some point, is the water being delivered to Trinidad, it's untreated water that would still needed to be treated by the city of Trinidad's water plant? Is that the case?
No, that's, that's not the case. It would be total potable water. So, um, our water comes from four rainy wells that are, um, embedded in the aquifer under the Mad River. They're down about, um, anywhere from 60 to 90 feet below the river level. There's natural purification that happens. The only treatment that we have to do with that water to meet the state of California water quality standard is to add chlorine as a disinfectant, which is required by all public systems. And, um, so you, the water is ready to drink as soon as you turn on the tap.
Okay, thank you. I have, uh, another question for you. So, are you saying that in the, the planning for putting a pipeline, uh, let's say to the Rancheria, since they're the initial respondent to your feasibility study, that there isn't, you've in no way considered any of the other developable areas north of the Little River such as Green Diamond Parcels, um, or any other develop, developable lots or people that are currently on wells that would, that would wish to access, um, Mad River water? Is that the case? You're only going to do, if, if the Rancheria is the only person that wants to participate in this feasibility study, um, is the plan to just make a hard line straight to the Rancheria and with no feeder lines coming off anywhere else?
Yes, if, um, West Haven Community Service District, um, doesn't change their mind and they say they want to stay out of this feasibility and the city of Trinidad says that you do not want to participate in the feasibility of the line, then the line would potentially just go direct from McKinleyville to the Rancheria. And it would be sized only to suit the demands of the Rancheria. And so it would be virtually impossible for other people to access that line.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jack.
You said that, um, we could design a line just for the city of Trinidad, but I believe we're already involved with a lot of, the water line goes well beyond Trinidad already. And we're already providing water and I think we would still have to provide water for all those areas. Um, so would, would we be able, if we are now providing water for people outside of the city, um, is that going to, is that change our types of controls we would have over the water?
Yes, uh, I'm, I'm not familiar with your distribution grid. Um, if your grid goes outside your city limits, then, um, the answer to your question is yes, you would, you would have to control it through, um, the, the county building and zoning outside your jurisdiction. It's my understanding. And that's, that's problematic because, you know, you don't have control over the county.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Friedenbach, I have a question, two questions as well. Um, so when Humboldt Bay sells water to a municipality such as Trinidad, um, if, is the amount of water that we are granted limited to our use or is there, um, is there the ability to request water beyond our use? I'm just curious if there's, if Humboldt Bay allows one of its customers to request more than its, than its use and then has the ability to sell that water, um, beyond their own needs?
Yeah, so, um, you're getting into some complicated water law questions. Um, I can answer it as far as I can go with it, but there's, uh, if we go too far into selling from Humboldt Bay to the city of Trinidad and then city of Trinidad sells to another municipality or, you know, a, a user outside your sphere of influence under LACCO, um, then you get into what's called change of use in the water law. You have to get a special permit from the water board to do that. In order for our water district to sell water on this potential pipeline going north, we are going to have to do exactly that. We're going to have to apply to the water board to get a change of use, um, that's going to be outside our district boundaries because our district boundaries basically end, um, around McKinleyville. Um, and so the water, that's one of the steps in the feasibility study is to talk to the water board and see what it would take to get that change of use permit approved. Um, and, you know, the change of use would need to encompass each area that potentially would get water from the water line. So we know that West Haven is not interested. We know that the Rancheria is interested. If your city chooses to be interested, we would include the city of Trinidad. And now it sounds like from what your councilman, previous councilman mentioned, that you do have some distribution grid outside your city limits. So we would need to include that unincorporated area outside your city limits. Um, so I hope that answers the question about the use in that area.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, the question about, um, availability of water. We don't contract for, um, a specific, uh, definite quantity of water to a municipality. Um, we have a very complex pricing structure on our ordinance 16, um, that we use to allocate costs amongst, um, currently we supply seven municipalities with water and all seven of those share in our operating costs. There's, uh, uh, several complicated formulas that allocate the cost based on relative cost to, uh, pump the water and, uh, distribute the water to the respective agencies. So for example, city of Eureka is our biggest customer. It makes, um, sense for them to pay the lion's share of our operating costs. So they, um, do that. Um, water district like Manila, um, out on the small peninsula, they're the smallest water district that takes water from us and they pay the least amount of our allocated cost. So it's, it's based on volume, it's based on, um, the, um, formulas that are in, um, our ordinance 16 that allocate the cost amongst uh, the different municipalities. So if you, um, said, you know, if we calculated that you needed, let's say it's a million gallons a day of water and you consumed 1.2 million or 1.4 million or 2 million or 5 million, um, your relative percentage um, increases relative to the consumption of the other municipalities. And so you would pay an incremental share.
Uh, we lost it, uh, John. I think.
Hey, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, you sound great, Dave.
All of a sudden, everything cleared up. When the storm cleared up, everything cleared up, I could tell. Um, I just had a couple of comments.
John is still, John was talking, so are you able to, is anyone else hearing John?
Am I back now?
Yeah, now you're back. Okay.
Okay, sorry. I don't know why the phone cut out. I'm not sure where you stopped hearing me. Um, but I was talking about the, the way our, our cost system in ordinance 16 allocates cost between the relative municipalities based on volume. Um, and so we don't contract a fixed quantity of water to each municipality. Um, we have what's called a, a peak allocation, um, and then we do a rolling five-year average consumption. And those, uh, numbers are used to, uh, calculate relative ratios that are, are allocated against our cost structure. Um, and we recoup our operating costs through those mechanisms. So, um, what I was saying is that if, for example, your, um, city of Trinidad said, we need, uh, a million gallons a day of water and you started consuming 1.2 million or 1.5 million or 2 million or 3 million gallons a day, um, we would still provide the water to you, but your cost, incremental cost relative to the other municipalities would start to increase based on the relative consumption that you would have compared to the other municipalities.
Final question then for you and it's, you've already mostly addressed it. I just want to see if this scenario makes sense. Uh, one of the, um, one of the discussion points has been as a resiliency and a backup um, to our water supply. Our creek so far has been adequate in supplying the town and the whole service area, uh, without fail. And so if there, in, somewhere in your pricing structure or, um, in what you're able to provide, if, is there a possibility for the city to only draw upon the water when needed, have the pipe only when needed and have a rate structure that allows us to not draw on the water, um, perhaps the whole year? Um, in, in many cases, we don't have any water needs for the year because we've been, um, living within our means. Is there such a price structure as a, really as a backup in case our tank fails, in case our pump, uh, house fails or anything along those lines?
Right, we, we don't currently have a mechanism, um, in our rate structure to do that. Um, we can certainly talk about that. One of the considerations you're going to want to think about is um, water goes stagnant in pipes if you don't flush the pipes. So, um, wherever the, the valve would be, let's just do a hypothetical here. Let's say the, uh, pipeline went from McKinleyville to the Trinidad Rancheria and then further to the city of Trinidad. And there was a valve right after Trinidad Rancheria that was turned off um, because the city didn't, you know, have the need for water. Then we got into a, a series of drought years and, um, Leffinhold Creek was not able to supply, um, you know, your full water need. Then you wanted to
Then you wanted to open the valve, you would need to flush that line um, to, to make sure that no stagnant water uh, remains in the line. Um, and, and then you could operate, but it's, it wouldn't be as simple as just saying, oh, we wanna turn the valve and, and instantly we're gonna have water.
That makes sense. Thank you very much for your, uh, for your input.
Right.
Okay. And uh, my, my one quick question was about if um, we, we have some positive feedback on water catchment systems off Leupenholz too. Um, our county supervisors mentioned it a lot and our public, we've had some positive feedback from the public. So if we do this feasibility study, does that help with a comparative analysis? If we're uh, trying to do stuff like that too, so that we can do a comparative analysis? Or is that just two different ballparks and, and there's no association? Um, and, and maybe we can get a hold of you later and, you know, because I know the Ranjerea is adamant about getting water too. So to me, the more information I have about what each, each scenario does, the better decision I can make. Um, that's, that's the reason I'm proposing for it.
Yeah, uh, it's really not a question for me to answer, I don't think, because I know nothing about your catchment feasibility study though. Um, but you know, just in general terms, if you're looking at different options, um, yeah, um, this feasibility study would give you the option of what it would um, look like for a pipeline to come to the city of Trinidad. And then you compare that to your existing system, reliability, you know, supply, quality of water, all of those things. Um, and, and then of course you make your decision.
Okay. Yeah, cause we had about, you know, over 20, almost 30% leakage or loss to leakage. So that was something that we wanted to address too, cause that, that never gets better. So even if you're piping water in, I mean, you're still attaching to that system, right? It's not totally new all the way down the streets.
No, we're not, we're, um, a new supply line would go to wherever your distribution grid starts. And so that, that's some of the information we would need from your staff, you know, is where would the pipeline ultimately go to? Uh, what is the current consumption by your residents through your system? And those type of things would um, be um, provided by your staff.
Any other uh, questions or comments for Mr. Friedenbach? Thank you very much, uh, John. At this point, um, I would like to um, open it up for public comment regarding this issue. And because we have over 50 people, oh yeah, go ahead, Eli.
Yeah, I wanted to um, mention that I did ask Steve Allen, our city engineer, to also be on this WebEx so that he could weigh in a little bit as far as uh, the cost estimate and, and uh, doing a feasibility study. So I thought that would be relevant.
Yeah, if he's able to, to, I'm sorry, I didn't see him um, on the call. So Steve, are you able to provide your input at this point?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So yeah, it's hard to, it's to provide an exact cost like John mentioned without really knowing what would be involved. But as far as just providing reports and compiling information that's been done in the past, that would probably be, you know, in the hundreds of dollars and not thousands of dollars. And then it depends on what questions and what comes up. But it's, in, in general, from a technical perspective, it seems like it makes sense to gather more information, to have the options. And that's not to say that from a technical perspective, this is the option we wanna pursue. It's, we're trying to pursue all supply options and to have information to know what, what options are on the table. So just like Mr. Grover was saying, it's nice to have all the facts from trying to make decisions. So an exact cost estimate really isn't, isn't possible this time, but it just seems like it's more pennies on the dollar. Um, it doesn't seem like it'd be a lot of staff time, a lot of consultant time from us. But we, we feel like it makes sense to get more information and participate in order to have that knowledge.
Uh, Mr. Columbus?
Yes, will members of the council, uh, after public comment, have an opportunity to speak before there's a motion to move forward?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Tom, are you, uh, do you have a question? You're on mute, sir. All right, we're moving on. God bless uh, digital world. Any other uh, questions then at this point from the council for either Steve or John before I open it back up to public comment? All right, at this point, um, again, a, a reminder that we have 49 participants in the, in the call tonight. So please keep your comments um, brief, uh, within the three-minute time allotment. Uh, but we definitely wanna make sure that we provide space for that. Again, we are um, considering only the, whether or not to enter a feasibility study. Uh, yes, there are downstream effects to that um, feasibility study, but at this point, please limit your comments to um, the feasibility study. So at this point, um, I will do my best to see people either raising your hand. So please either turn your camera on so I can see that you're raising your hand or put something in the chat. I know if you're, and at some point we will stop and move to the folks who have called in and give them a, a chance to um, to call in. And if I remember correctly, it's pound six on your phone to unmute yourself, I, I believe. Um, so at this point, I see uh, Mr. Miller with his hand up first. So Dwight, please, uh, you've got 2 minutes and 59 seconds.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to, the council to seriously consider uh, input from uh, city residents primarily this evening. Other, other people outside the city, listen to them, fine. But the, but your decisions are, are, are concerning the future of the city of Trinidad. And so um, there's a lot of passion and people outside the city. Uh, they, they can take their passion for their jurisdiction. But uh, please uh, try and focus your comments, just as this is speaking to the jury. Uh, you know, listen to comments of, of city residents. The second thing is, in my 15 years here, um, we've had three almost uh, cannot spill Leupenholz uh, dry events. In other words, in October, uh, I was working for a couple of days there with uh, the city manager in 2012, October 2012. We came very close to not having enough water to spill over. We were required to have a certain amount. And so we have, just in my recent memory, uh, dry, significant dry spells. And we need to plan, you as the city officials need to plan for the future. We don't know what climate change is gonna give us. When we have the opportunity to have clean water and without the October surprise of a drought, because there is a significant amount of this, this coming from Mad River, um, we ought to seriously consider this and the feasibility of it. Like I'll talk later, uh, in terms of whether we wanna hook up or not, but to do the feasibility, I strongly urge you to do that. And I want to emphasize in the second paragraph of the staff report, the city has control over the future development through zoning. So don't worry about um, our ability to control development, we can do it. I highly recommend that you pursue this because we need to plan for the future. This is basically a dry space. Cannot depend on Leupenholz for all of it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And just to reiterate, um, that what, I think what you were mentioning with city residents, that really we're talking about existing city customers, city water customers. Um, because we do have a service area that extends beyond our city limits. Um, so just, that is really, um, and I wanna also echo what, what you say. Um, if we could, when you speak, please introduce yourself and where you live. Um, just so that the council has a sense of input from people that are current customers versus outside of our area. Um, so please include that in your comments. So thank you, Mr. Miller. Um, other comments from the public? I'm gonna invite um, Mr. Madron, oh, I hear.
I can speak, Anita Thompson.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Thompson. There you are.
My husband, Norman Thompson, and I live in the city, uh, we're city water customers. We live in the city limits. Uh, we, can you hear me this time?
Yes, very well.
All right, we feel strongly that due to our climate crisis, long-term drought status, limited water source, Leupenholz Creek, which could easily be depleted in series of droughts, we need to import water and have a more stable source of water for our residential and local businesses and for fire safety. Therefore, we support our, the feasibility analysis to extend Humboldt Bay municipal water service to Trinidad. No plan or solution for future water shortages is now in place. As stated at last month's meeting, if we were at a critical water shortage and needed to truck water in, we do not even have a permit to do so. It was also stated that Leupenholz Creek could go from full capacity to limited capacity pretty quickly. Um, I'm surprised that our community is not more concerned about the real possibility of critical and severe water shortage emergencies given climate crisis, our long-term drought status and our limited water source. With no disrespect intended, I don't feel that some of the public truly understands the magnitude of this issue. During the early 1980s, when I attended Humboldt State, drought conditions were not a problem. In fact, I used to get tired of the continuous months of rainfall. However, climate change has arrived in Humboldt County. Droughts and wildfires will continue to be an ongoing major issues. During times of drought, water levels in lakes, streams, creeks and reservoir, reservoirs fall. We feel strongly that we are at real danger of losing our only source of water, but no alternative water source in place. We should also be aware of negative impact on property values and climate insurance costs that would occur if we do not have a viable, ongoing water source. The recent storms have brought summer length to California. However, it is not enough to remove long-term drought conditions and its negative impacts. When I lived in Southern California, it was discovered that my local, my local water company contained several toxic metals due to contaminated wells. This water company in Marietta, California ended up importing water from a lesser water company. And as a result, result, our community had clean water plus our water rates did not increase. Please move forward with participation in the feasibility analysis to extend Humboldt Bay municipal water service to Trinidad. Obtaining information does not obligate us, but to refuse information about this extremely important matter would be unwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, Mr. Madron, are you able to uh, join us again?
Yeah, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, well, I don't think, I don't think I can do it in three minutes. So maybe I'll let everybody speak and then if you wouldn't mind, give me about five minutes. I have a number of things I'd like to share in regards to uh, things I've been hearing from my constituents.
Um, I'm happy to, to give you the five minutes now just because of your vast experience. So um, let us, let's uh, let's have you speak now, if that's okay.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that consideration. Um, for those that don't know me, I'm your fifth district supervisor. I've lived here in the Trinidad area for 48 years. I've lived in the Leupenholz watershed for 35 years. I did my master's thesis on Leupenholz Creek in 2011. Uh, I have a master's in hydrology and watershed management. And I've been involved in water supply issues all over the county for a long time. Um, so that's my background and I don't take these things lightly. Uh, folks are absolutely uh, right to be concerned about water supply and water resiliency. Uh, and that's why for 25 years, I've been giving the city free advice on how to do that. I've created a lot of presentations and papers, uh, and a lot of details of how the city can be sure that they have enough water for all of their existing customers as well as some infill, as well as adequate fire protection. We can do all of that without bringing a pipeline from the Mad River that would create growth inducement. You know, it's true that there are zoning and other regulations in the city as well as in the county. But just let me give you a quick example. Uh, just north of town, five years ago or so, there was a subdivision proposed on an 18-acre parcel by College Cove. Uh, it was proposed to be one-acre parcels. Uh, they were gonna get the water from wells and then leach back into the ground with septic systems. The county's general policy right now is to not allow that density when you're both trying to pull water and septic from the same acre. As you can imagine, everybody would be basically pooping in each other's water uh, and contaminating those wells. There's not enough room for it. So this, the county generally uses a density of two acres per parcel if that parcel is trying to do water and sewer or septic on the same parcel. So if there was water, if there was a water line, you know, if there was water available, then you could have, instead of nine two-acre parcels, you could have 18 one-acre parcels. So you know, it's not so much that people are afraid of the development that might happen in the city. Um, and I recognize, as Dwight said, I don't live in the city, but guess what? You get my water off my land. Uh, I own property on Leupenholz Creek and I take my forest stewardship very seriously. I'm thinning from below, creating an older forest, which we know from science, uh, protects the water table much better than young growth uh, forests. And so uh, the water runs off my land and everybody up in Upper Leupenholz and it comes down and then the city takes it away. And I would also submit that uh, as a representative of my constituents, I very much wanted to weigh into this issue, so thank you for the opportunity. Um, so there is absolutely a growth inducement element. You know, the pipeline routes, if you look at the 2008 report, what I wanna say is that this has already been studied. It's not that we don't know uh, about this opportunity. It's actually been studied uh, two times in great depth, 2001, 2008, along with follow-up memos from our engineers in 15, 12 and 19. And the bottom line is, in 2001, the estimate for bringing this line from Humboldt Bay or from the end of the line in McKinneville was a little over a million dollars, 1.2. By 2008, seven years later, they had realized that they were gonna need to have a pump station at the north end of the line on Dow's Prairie in order to have adequate pressure. And they were going to have to add a chlorination facility. And so the cost of this estimate went up to 5 million in six years. Now that was 13 years ago, so I don't know about you. Uh, there's no current estimate and yes, this study might get that. But basically, it's gonna be over 10 million, could be easily 15, 20 million. And to think of this as a backup line to yours, now you're paying for that line and you're also paying for your existing system, clearly your rates would go up. So you know, rather than spending the money on this feasibility analysis, I really wish the city would spend its money on analyzing the gravity flow spring system that I've laid out for the city many, many times, that actually could be a, a way of intertime with West Haven as well and having kind of a mutual system where we work together. Those springs provide super clean, clear water. It would save you money on staff, on electricity. You could have a redundant small hydro line and actually run your, your plant for free. You can reduce all the chemical alloys that go in water system. So why do that? Why not tap it up in the springs? So I just wanna encourage you to spend your money on analyzing that spring development system. Uh, it only really takes a little bit of work, maybe 20,000. And that you work with West Haven on the intertime and that you put your money into grant writing to fix your leaks and to come up with cost sharing to provide hard tanks all over town, all over West Haven and then add that 500,000 house tank to your storage, up at your main storage facility. And that was actually identified in 2008 and it still hasn't been done. So there's tons of recommendations of things you could be doing to increase your resiliency, fire protection, water quality and all of that. You don't need to bring the line from Mad River to do that. So I just, I, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madron. Um, and uh, let's keep going with public comment. Other public comments? My system is slowing down. Can you hear me, Mr.? Just trying to speak. Uh, there we are, go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
Yes, thank you, Bryce Kenny, 462 Ocean Avenue, Trinidad. Um, this idea of bringing uh, water up from the Mad River has been kicking around since at least I was on the city council in 1986 and prior to that. So it's been studied up one side and down the other. And the answer has always been, no, it's not the right solution for Trinidad. Um, Trinidad has always been able to take care of its own water needs. And I think if we play our cards right, we will continue to be able to do that without the Mad River. the Mad River. There's no doubt it's feasible. The question is, do we need it and do we want it? Supervisor Madrone, very good illustration of the growth-inducing effect that this area causes. And people like the rural nature of this area. They like the character of this area, and I like it too, and I don't want to see it changed by overdevelopment. And you just cannot get around it. Once the water pipe gets there, no matter how big it is, eventually, it's going to get bigger and bigger, and then you do have the pressure of, oh, now we need a sewer system to handle all this. And it's a slippery slope. The city should not start down that road, even though the cost is minimal. If you're in for a dime, you're in for a dollar. And, you know, there's easier, less expensive things the city can do right now, like link up with West Haven water so we can rely on each other in a case of emergency or that kind of thing. And West Haven had the right answer. They said, no, thank you to the water. We need to do the same thing and say, no, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Other folks who wish to speak. And again, if you start speaking, you move over to my screen, and I can see your face come up, or at some point, we're going to open up to the phone folks as well. All right, seeing no other comments at this point from those who have dialed in.
Steve, Steve, it's Kim.
I see Ross. Go ahead, Ross.
I would just like to echo the comments of Supervisor Madrone and Mr. Kenny in saying that Trinidad is very picturesque, and as soon as you open up that water, you're going to have a lot of development, and that's not going to be good for the long-term feasibility in that. And also, the money could be better spent with Supervisor Madrone's ideas. Thank you.
And Ross, do you mind telling us where you are located?
I live in Bayside, California, but I have property in West Haven.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're just trying to get a scope of who's in the conversation.
Totally understandable. Thank you.
Steve Ladwick, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Kimberly Taze.
Go ahead.
Okay. I was a 14-year resident of Trinidad, and I now live in Arcata. I'm very passionate about protecting Trinidad's natural beauty and the character. I lived in San Diego for 20 years, and I saw the place change dramatically in 20 years. And it was from overdevelopment, and I just have the same fears that the same thing would happen in this case, and that's why I'm against participating in the feasibility study, because I feel like no matter how you slice and dice and shake and bake it, the water line is going to induce development and growth. Once you have lots of water, it's going to equal lots of development. The pipeline would allow a five-and-a-half-story hotel on a coastal bluff, and I see that as symbolic of what a water line would do to the Trinidad area. I really love the suggestions that Supervisor Madrone brought up about resiliency and the idea of working with West Haven and possibly tapping into their springs and different hydrology ideas there is just, I hadn't thought of that before. I thought that was a great suggestion to build resiliency. I worry once you bring in a pipeline that, with the overuse of water and septic and all that system, that it's logical that the state of California will eventually mandate a sewage treatment facility due to the complications from excess water usage and septic system overuse or groundwater contamination. So those are the things that I agree to with Supervisor Madrone, that I don't take this lightly. I think there are some really good suggestions brought up about the concerns of climate change and drought and fire and all that. That is a new concern for sure. But I lived in Trinidad for 14 years, and just as an example of waste, I would see water sprinklers on certain properties when it was pouring down rain. And I also was involved with the short-term rental issues, and I saw the water usage by the short-term rentals, and I was astounded at how much water the vacation rental users use. It was five, six, 10 times more than my husband and I used or other similar families used. So I think there is a lot of room for conservation, and if people want to preserve Trinidad and secure their water resiliency, think about how you yourself can preserve and conserve your water so that you don't have to need a pipeline such as this. So thank you for my comments. I'm outside the area, but I do feel that I am just as worthy of making a public comment because California belongs to me too, and California coastal zone is important to me. And so I do not think that just because I'm outside of the city of Trinidad, I should not be able to speak when it is dealing with coastal issues such as this. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Taze. Other comments from the general public.
Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Megan O'Brien, and I just wanted to share, I'm sorry for the feedback.
Can you share where you are living right now, Ms. O'Brien?
I own a home in McKinleyville.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi. And I just want to put out there
On the call.
The importance
On the civic, city council call.
Of maintaining the precious nature of Trinidad and the West Haven area for future generations. It's known as a biologically significant place globally, and this whole feasibility study is coming about because of the Trinidad Rancho Ria Hotel project. And to think that one project is driving a city to consider this long-term, not only commitment to changing their view of water and use of water, but the entire regional implication that this water and development will have is, I just am urging you, our only elected officials, to think very calmly about the interest of the city of Trinidad over the next 20 years. If this amount of water is made available to the region, I think it's clear what the effect will be. And I have great respect for you as policy writers, and we look to you for your leadership. And do not let one project by a neighbor drive this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Other comments from folks. Go ahead.
Oh, good evening. My name is Katrine Holman. Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Ms. Holman, and can you tell us where you are living?
Okay. I live at Little River. However, we own a property, and it happens to be the property right outside town that Supervisor Madrone was talking about. And I want you all to know that every information that Mr. Madrone said about our project is was full with false information. Every sentence that described our project was filled with false information. I am in support of this feasibility study because it's important for you to have correct information. You had tonight several suggestions about other ways to improve your water, your existing water system. These are only suggestions. This study, this feasibility study, is a professional way to secure and to provide your council and the community with valuable data that is correct information in regards of this water service extension to the city of Trinidad. So please, please do this, please go for this study. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Other folks who wish to, looks like Ms. Laus has raised her hand.
Yes, I just want to make a comment. Shirley Laus, Trinidad Rancho Ria resident and tribal member, and I also work for the tribe as the governmental affairs coordinator. As such, I attend all the city council meetings and most all of the planning commission meetings and have been involved in city issues for decades. And I just want to point out that this agenda item, like you tried to mention in your opening remarks, is not driven by the Trinidad Rancho Ria and any projects that we might have. And actually, in the planning commission discussions and in Trevor Parker's staff report and in the water shortage document itself, it lists one of the options for future consideration is to talk with the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Has nothing to do with committing. It was one of the city's own ideas that that is an option to consider and that it should be discussed and looked at. So if you, not you, the city council, but if people would look at those documents, attend those meetings, and, you know, read the city's own planning documents, that's where you'll find this idea. It's just an option to look at for future water needs. So anyway, people can have their own opinions, but I would just like to put some facts on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laus. Others who wish to make a comment. Not seeing any at this point. I would like to bring it back to the council. We've heard, we've heard some great comments. We've also, I just want to remind everybody that the council has had access to, I'm going to guess somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 communications. Gabe says it was a few more, but maybe there were some repeats in there. So we have had lots of input for us to consider. So please know that that is in our minds as well as we resume this discussion among ourselves. So at this point, council members, input, feedback, direction, reaction. Go ahead, Mr. Kompas.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. So as one of the newest members of the council, I'm both honored and humbled to be a part of the council. All the council members are volunteers, put in hours every week to try to make good decisions to support the health and welfare of the citizens of Trinidad. Part of my work on the Water Committee has created a lot of research, and one of the documents that I did research was a 2008 engineering report that did include hooking up the Humboldt Bay water supply. It also provided other options, such as a storage tank, a 500,000 gallon storage tank, better infiltration facilities, upgrades of the plants. And from my perspective, none of those things took place. The previous councils, I don't mean to criticize them, just making an observation, these difficult decisions were never made. So we find ourselves in 2021 with a situation where if it rains too much, you have too much turbidity in the water from Lufenholz Creek, and it may be difficult to refine it and get the organic solids out. If it's a drought, we don't have enough water with the current system. So I look at what are the options that we have as a city. Trinidad, for the most part, is pretty much fully developed. There's not a whole lot of space left to create more living space and residential units. So the question becomes for the city and the city council, what do we want to do as a group to help support the health and welfare of the residents to make sure that when you turn the tap on, you get water? When you want to flush your toilet, you have water? Getting a feasibility study at a low cost, to me, provides us one piece of the puzzle. We can get the engineering study done and decide, is this the path as a city we want to go? Or do we want to spend, again, multi-millions of dollars on a better tank, aquifers, and other things? It's going to require a significant financial investment, capital investment by the city. If we don't do anything again and kind of kick the can down the road, it could end up being a catastrophe in the future. Because if we were to have a fire in town and we have pretty much a full-blown catastrophe, we could empty the tanks in a period of just a couple hours. So it's my concern that going through this process, being able to support a feasibility study just simply makes sense. It's gathering data, not, so. That's it for me. Thank you.
Richard, I'm going to go around the
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We lost everybody. Richard, we lost everybody, I think. We have to go back over here, talk again.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Can you hear me, Richard?
Yes, I can hear you.
A lot of people, a lot of people are off right now.
Okay. So can you hear me now?
Looks
I heard
Yeah, I heard everything Richard said.
A lot of people
I heard everything Richard said.
Yeah, me too. Anybody, clearly.
Would you like me to repeat some of it, or?
Wait a minute. Let's everybody hold on and let people get back on again. We lost a lot of people. You got about halfway through, and then we started losing a lot of it. So hold on a second.
Okay. Jack, can you hear me? I think this might be on you, Jack.
I can't understand anybody right now, so just give it a second. I think it'll settle down.
I think this might be a problem with Jack's connection.
Are you there? Hold on a minute. Let's see if we can get everybody back on.
Jack, this is on you. Everyone else is hearing. God, I love this.
We're not getting, everybody's Now we can hear you. Steve, if you can come through, let's see if we can hear you now.
Yeah, I've never lost anything.
We got some big problems.
So what would you like me to do?
What?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Tom
Hold on, Richard. We got a lot of people, it looks like, that are still having trouble getting in.
This is on you.
Dave, can you tell what's going on?
Do you want me to say something, or?
Dave, do we have anything from you?
Hold on there, Richard.
Richard, we're just going to try to get it back on. Let's see, Dave, can you tell us anything?
Yeah, I, Tom, are you able to hear us now and wave?
Yeah, I've heard everything. I haven't had any trouble.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Tom. Let's hear from you.
Yeah, so I have, I've heard all of the arguments, pro and con. Many more con from my observations. I believe the city needs to pursue these other more localized ways to deal with our water supply. I find it very difficult to believe that putting a water line up from McKinleyville as far north as Trinidad would only be a single-use water line to the city of Trinidad. It just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem reasonable, it doesn't seem feasible that would actually be the case. I know I make decisions for the people that live in the city of Trinidad, but I also need to be a steward of the areas that are outlying. And I have yet to see a really solid argument that says that this would not be a growth-inducing type commitment. So I really believe that the city needs to act on a lot of the ideas that have presented to us so far. We haven't heard any dollar figures on this. And low cost does not seem a term that would accurately describe a project of this magnitude. We're looking at a fee of $40,000 to do a simple, looking to see if a couple intersections in town are going to cause more accidents than other intersections. $40,000 to do a study of that from an engineering firm. So at this time, I would move participation in a feasibility analysis of the water line by Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District to the city of Trinidad. We can still have conversation after this, but that's the motion on the table that I put.
A lot of mine does. It's probably nobody's. I'm just speaking bad, I didn't interrupt.
And I'm sorry, Tom, I'm trying to tell Jack very respectfully to shut up because he's, he's not, he's on a different, he's on a different phone line altogether. So let's see if that text gets through.
I just private chatted on Tuesday.
So, and so there is a motion on the floor, but I also want to make sure that, that Mr. Grover and Mr. West and I have a chance to weigh in. So let's, let's not hold up, let's not lose the motion. But let's just, let's get a little bit more com, comment yet.
Can Tom please repeat his motion? I could not hear him over Jack's conversation.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom. He's on mute. Tom, you're on mute.
All right. Got it again. Okay, third time's a charm here. Here we go. I move to deny, I move to refuse participation in a feasibility analysis of a water line conducted by and between the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District and the city of Trinidad to, to the city of Trinidad. Oh, God.
Okay. Mr. Grover, can you share some of your thoughts and comments?
Yes, my thoughts and comments. I tried to, just a little background information too. Before I did this, I did a lot of construction and stuff like that. But before, when I went to school, I went specifically for policy and environmental science. I'm definitely a proponent of smart green growth. I want public participation and government transparency through the whole process. So I don't, I don't care. I just don't feel like I'm committing the city to anything by participating in the study. And even though I've heard the arguments, I don't see any, I don't see the validity of them that it, because it's like we say, these studies have been done before and nothing ever happened. We still control the development up to there. And, oh, and I liked hearing from the Rancheria more. I was glad that somebody was there to represent them too, because I think a lot of times all the, all the comments come in and I don't hear enough from the Rancheria. And they were getting like, like this was some project and something that they're just trying to slide through really fast. So I'm, I'm going to vote for the feasibility study. I just don't see any downside to, to having more knowledge.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Technically, procedurally, you should call to see if there's a second for the pending motion from council committees. And then if there is a second, then you can call for further discussion on the motion on the floor. Or you could proceed with discussion how you deem fit if that motion failed.
Thank you very much, Russ, and for that procedural check. So at this point, we do have a first from Mr. Davies. Do we have a second? And let's see, Jack, are you able to, to hear this? Can you chat your answer?
I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me, Steve?
Now you're perfect.
I, I have to, I'm, I'm really sorry for interrupting. I thought everybody was out. I couldn't hear anything. It sounded like everything was going bad. So I still have no idea what's been said. So I'm, I need to, I'm going to try to, I'll try, I think I'm going to try to get out and come back in because I haven't, it's just not, I can't get anything.
You sound now, you sound great now, Jack.
I can't hear you at all now.
Oh, shit. All right.
I can't hear anything. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out and come back in.
All right, everybody take a, take a quick breather here because we don't want to, we can't make a decision when one of our counselors hasn't heard any of the discussion. This is a bio break for folks. It might take Jack a minute or two to, to go out and come back in. So hang tight.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
That's really clear now. Can I apologize to Richard and everybody else? I really thought that, I didn't realize it was just me going out. So please understand, I didn't mean to do that. I did not hear what Tom, I did not hear what Tom said. Could you do that quickly again, Tom?
I move to deny, I move to not participate in the feasibility study to extend a water line by the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District to the city of Trinidad.
May I make a couple of comments before we go on?
Well, we have a...
I'd like to have a second.
Yeah, Russ, go ahead.
I will second it.
All right. We have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like to add something.
Go ahead.
All right. First of all, I want to, um, say that I've really gone back and forth with this. I thought this is a really good idea to get this water study done. But with, I tell you, I don't think I've ever seen so many letters come in with capital letters and exclamation points since, in eight years. So I know this is a pretty important item to our community. And although I really think it's a good idea, I also think that what David Drone suggested is, has some merit to it. I would like to see the money we would be spending to do this, I'd like to see it spent on beginning to work on some of the ideas that Drone, Drone had rather than trying to push through something that I think is going to get shot down later anyway. I just don't see the community supporting this idea based on the letters I received. So I would like it. I just want you to know, my feeling is that, although I, I'm really scared of this a little bit because I think that water might be important. And I really tell you, after listening to, to John tell us his information, it was very difficult to say no. But I'm still going to stick with this. I think I'd like to see it, the money be put into the Drone's idea, see if we can start something within our area with West Haven, to get a better water supply and keep, keep future development away if possible.
Thank you, Mr. West. I'm going to jump in here with my two cents. I'm, I too have spent quite a bit of time, well, only four years on the council. And I want to, I want to really recognize the, the comments that folks brought up that were in favor of a feasibility study, because it comes from a place where our resiliency in the face of a drought or, or any, any disruption to our water flow is affecting our health and wellness and is affecting our ability to, to live in this community. However, I really feel strongly about the fact that we have an opportunity to be a model community that is, that is, its growth is dependent on the resources that are in hand. And bringing water from outside of our area is something that's been done routinely everywhere. And we just lost power.
Lost power. Oh, my God.
All right. I know that some of us on battery can still, we're all gone now.
I'm still here.
Well, right. But in terms of all the...
All the council, yeah.
Yeah, our city manager, Councilman Grover, Councilman West.
I'm still here.
Oh, there's, there, there we are. Yeah. Shit, I shouldn't have talked. I should have just called for a vote. We could have been done. You know what, gentlemen? This might be the big one in terms of a longer outage. Usually when it comes back on, it comes right back on. But I'm happy to sit here for a minute.
Yeah. Oh, there goes, no, there's Richard. Do you have power, Richard, or are you on a backup?
I'm on a battery system just in my home office.
Okay.
It'll last about 20 minutes, then it'll go out.
Yeah, I'm using a cell modem right now. So that's why I'm still got...
Yeah.
Yeah, me too. I'm on an AT&amp;T hotspot and my battery. So... Is Russ, Russ, are you able to weigh in or are you in the dark as well?
Yeah, I'm, I still have power here in Eureka. Still on the off. Again, it's the same concern that previously expressed as a participation in the project and then maintenance of a quorum such that you are all hearing each other well enough to make informed decisions. One option, I know it involves multiple schedules, but you can continue this, adjourn and continue the same meeting within 24, within a later time period, in which case we'd post, repost the agenda, Brownout compliant agenda. But anyway, those are options available.
Well, I see that we have our, our quorum back. I'm not quorum, we have everybody back.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you can hear me, it's Bryce Kenny.
I can.
Public comment has been closed. The council is deliberating. I don't see any legal reason why, why you can't finish this item at least before you have to continue the meeting.
Right, Bryce, I was really waiting for the council to come back in its entirety. So I'm seeing Jack, Richard, Tom, and...
That's it.
Uh, we lost David again. Darn it.
Still have a quorum.
I know, I know. And I, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to discount it at all. I just, I want, I want those who can vote on this to be able to vote. And so let's give, let's give David a little bit of, a little bit of time to come back.
Got power back here.
Yeah. Steve, are you gonna, are we gonna make this the last item tonight?
I believe so.
I would, I would say.
Yeah. So let's give, let's give David a, a quick second to log back in and then I'm going to call a vote.
I'm going to say something real quick. I just want to tell John Friedenbach how much I appreciate his, what he said. I mean, it really opened my eyes. So thank you. You did a great job. Very convincing. Not, I'm still, I came up with, I mean, really, I came in today saying no, but you really presented a nice presentation. Thank you very much for coming in and talking to us.
You know, in the downtime, I definitely, I, I was fortunate enough to speak with Mr. Friedenbach earlier this morning. And to have his involvement has been really, really critical to a deeper understanding. So thank you for making time for this important issue. And we are minutes away from having Mr. Grover back. And then I'm going to call a vote. And then with everyone's permission, I think I will close the meeting after that because this is too disruptive.
Thank you.
David is, like I said, David is inches away from getting back in.
Steve, do we have anything on here that would be, that is absolutely urgent or that we should probably have a second meeting right away and take care of? Or do you think we could push it to February?
Um, I don't think the GHD agreement for the safety plan is time sensitive.
Nope.
Oh, sorry. I meant, yeah. And the moratorium status certainly can, we can call another meeting. We also have a meeting in two weeks that we can look to.
That's what I'm hoping we can do is this. Let's see if we can push this till the next time. I don't know about the GHD agreement for local road safety funding, but have to be more, would have to be immediate or not.
Richard, can you run up on Dave's door? I'm just kidding.
Let me give him a call.
Can we call him?
I just texted him, but you know, I don't know what his carrier is and what his service is right there.
Can we, can we call him on the phone and have him do something over the phone with us? We don't need to have a vote.
Maybe we need to do a roll call vote because of this connection issue.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. I don't know where Mr. Grover went.
His phone goes right to voicemail.
Yeah, maybe because we were all calling at the same time.
Somebody should run over to his house and...
Yeah.
Knock on the door.
We tried.
I asked Mr. Kompas and he, he declined. So I guess, actually, Richard, he's right between the two of us, isn't he?
He is, he is.
Yeah.
In a way, in a way.
Well, I'd like to finish this one. Does Eli, Eli, do you know that we, we were considering ending the meeting after this just because of so many difficulties? What do you think of that idea?
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. Of course, we do have Russ on the call and he may think that there's something that needs to be addressed tonight. And otherwise, that makes sense to me.
What about number six, the GHD agreement? Is that, is that pressing?
Well, we have, we have, we should have Josh from SHN, or from GHD, rather, Josh from GHD. So if Josh is on, maybe he could weigh in as far as the timeline.
Sure. I would say that is not a critical item that could be pushed till next meeting next month.
Okay, Dave is back.
That's all right.
All right. So David Grover, are you able to wait on our vote here? I don't see, where are you? He's on mute. Dave, you're on mute. So he might be waiting for that connection to, to come up.
It keeps putting me in and out.
All right. So we have a first. So please let me get through this. We have a first and a second motion to, in essence, to deny involvement in the feasibility study. So we're going to do a roll call vote to make sure that we've got this covered. Gabe, are you able to, to do a roll call vote?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
To do a roll call vote. Are we ready?
Yeah, can we just make it clear what the vote is for?
That's a good point, Richard. So if you vote yes on this agenda item, you are voting to deny or to, to not enter a feasibility study with Humboldt Bay water to move water north of, of the Little River. If you vote no on this, it's because you want to have If you vote no on this, it's because you want to have the city of Trinidad enter in the feasibility study. So Gabe, if you can call a roll, that would be great.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Columbus?
No.
Davies? Councilmember Grover?
No.
Councilmember West?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mayor Ladwick?
Yes.
Three yes, two no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much for that discussion. So again, just so folks are aware, the city has declined to enter into the feasibility study to bring water from Humboldt Bay, Wild, Humboldt Bay Water District north of the Little River. Thank you very much for the discussion, everybody. In light of the incredibly unstable evening electronically speaking, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and I will discuss with our city manager and our mayor pro tem on if we need to have an emergency meeting or, or another meeting rather between here and our scheduled February meeting. So thank you very much for your participation this evening and for sticking out what has been a very challenging night. Take care all.
Thanks, everyone.
All right.